It's three o'clock. I'm gonna call the June.
July.
July ninth. Thank you. Work session to order. We're gonna start with our 2023 audit review.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to introduce Jim Hinkle. Jim Hinkle. He is our outside auditor for the town of Breckenridge, and he's here to present our 2023 ACF, which is our annual financial audit.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you all. There, there you go. Good afternoon. Thank you all for allowing me an opportunity to come in and describe a little bit about the audit process and the results of the audit. We are independent auditors, so we come in once a year and we look at the accounting and the financial reporting process. One of the first things we do is we update our understanding of the town's internal accounting controls. One of the things that we look for is a segregation of duties. Transactions typically take three steps. The initiation, the approval, and the recording of that transaction, and we're looking to ensure that no one individual is responsible for all of those processes. We also look at the control features within the accounting procedures. Control features are things like approval of an invoice prior to payment, approval of proper account coding, things of that nature. We go within and we select a random sample of disbursements and payroll transactions specifically to test the internal control structure and those control features to ensure that they are operating as intended and as we understand them. That allows us really to do two things. The first thing is that it allows us to identify if there are any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal controls for the accounting department. A significant deficiency is defined as a design flaw in the system of internal controls that would allow an error to go undetected in the ordinary course of business. And a material weakness is a significant deficiency that would allow a potential material misstatement to the financial statements. And based upon our review and our testing, we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure. That's the answer that you all want to hear. The second thing we do with that is we assess audit risk, specifically control risk within the accounting procedures. And we design our tests of audit procedures regarding the financial statements as we've done that. We then go in and audit the financial statements using mainly test of details, which is pretty much what it sounds like. We drill down into account balances and we look at the underlying transactions. And we agree those to supporting documentation such as invoices, contracts, deposits, agreements, things of that nature to ensure that the accounting is proper and that the financial statements are in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. We'll also use a variety of analytic review procedures where we compare the current year, the prior year, the current year to the budget numbers, relationships within the financial statements, looking for ratios or relationships that we either didn't expect or can't explain, and then we do more test of details. The end result of that is that we issue an opinion on the financial statements. Yours is what's technically called an unmodified opinion. In layman's terms, is a clean opinion. States that the financial statements are prepared in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. That's also the answer that you want to hear. In the last couple of years, you've got a large amount of federal grants that you have expended. And when any entity expends more than $750,000 in federal award dollars, they're required to have what's called a single audit. And that is where the external auditors will determine compliance with federal award programs in addition to auditing the financial statements, i.e. one big audit. And we did that as well. We issued two additional opinions with respect to the single audit process. The first one involves an overview of the town and kind of asks the question, does the town have the policies and procedures in place to determine what federal program monies it receives and what those compliance requirements are? And if we notice or find any instances of noncompliance at all through any of our processes, we're required to disclose it. And while that seems a little bit easy, that, yeah, I know what money I got. A lot of times federal dollars are passed through the state or other entities, and it's not always clear how much is federal dollars versus state dollars or other dollars. And so sometimes it gets a little convoluted. But based upon our work and our procedures, we also issued an unmodified opinion that you all do have the procedures to know what federal award programs you participated in and that you did not have any instances of noncompliance. The final report is where we specifically choose, based upon federal guidelines, individual federal programs, and we test in detail compliance with those programs. We'll sample test the expenditures. We'll look at the federal registers and determine what all the compliance requirements are. And we will go step by step verifying that the town has complied with those specific compliance requirements. And that is also an unmodified opinion that you have individual internal controls for each federal program and that we found basically no instances of noncompliance on the individual programs that we tested. So all in all, three audit opinions, three unmodified or cleaned opinions, and no significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, or findings or questioned costs with the federal compliance requirements. All in all, it was a very good, clean result for the audit process. We will issue a required communication letter that we're required to communicate in writing whether or not certain events occur, and we have nothing to communicate in writing in that letter. We did not have any disagreements with management. We did not have any difficulties in the course of the audit. We did not have any what we call audit adjustments, where we found errors in the books and records that required adjustment to be in compliance with general accepted accounting principles, nor did we find any small errors in the books and records that we felt were small enough that didn't need to be made. So all in all, that report is a clean, good report. Finally, probably the most important thing that I believe that I like to communicate to those charged with governance, and that is, we felt as auditors that we had open transparency. Everything that we asked for, we were provided for in a timely fashion. We were never kept from any information at all. And we felt like we could ask for and receive whatever source information we needed to be able to complete an independent audit. So I think that's important for you all to know as well. So that's the process of the audit. I usually don't talk a lot, the numbers a lot. I'll let Dave or Tracy talk about those, but that's kind of how we conduct an audit and what are results of the procedures that we performed. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Are there any questions?
Dave, do you want to, or Tracy, do you guys want us to direct questions to Jim right now, or do you have anything to add?
No, I just want to thank Tracy for her work in this process. And it shows in our auditing results, so.
Great. Okay. Any questions?
What is your purview? Is it mostly just procedural and checking the transparency part? Or do you actually assess the financial health of the municipality or the organization?
No, we do not opine on how healthy the town's financial statements are. We're looking at the accounting procedures and whether or not the financial statements are prepared in the same basis that all other municipalities prepare their financial statements, so you have comparability from one entity to the next. We really don't opine on whether or not fund balance is adequate or cash flow is adequate.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm curious. Awesome report. Thank you for that glowing kind of summary there. So that's all awesome news. You know, Dave and Tracy, I think one of the things I think about, and maybe it's just from being in the real estate business, is kind of keeping an eye on our long-term debt. I don't know if it'd be easy to put together some sort of amortization table, you know, maybe outside of this, obviously, but just something, as long as it wasn't a heavy lift to kind of understand, like, when our debt gets retired. And then, you know, when I look through, there's a pretty decent summary of the long-term debt on page. It looks like, I think it's fifty-seven of the actual audit. You know, you talked about, it's got like the COPs kind of broken out by year, the 2016, the 2020, the 2021, and then also the CWR and PDA, so the dam and the water plant. I'd love to see, like, hey, by year, what that chunk is, if that makes sense, if that's easy to put together. And then that way, as we're looking at, like, capital, you know, just kind of have an eye on, like, hey, this is our burn rate in debt per year. And then the other thing that I think about tied into that, so, yeah, maybe running it out the whole way for the amortization, so we can see kind of when stuff gets retired. On the ones, and I think so 2016 is Huron Landing, that COP. 2020 is Fiber in the Garage, so that's, maybe there's some revenue there on the garage that helps us. And then the rentals on the 2021 COP, I'd love to see kind of, I don't need down to the penny or even the dollar, but, you know, is there fifty grand a month in revenue, just kind of understanding some revenue offsets there to just see what sort of coverage we've got on that debt.
What's the net that we have to pay out each year is what you're getting after?
Exactly.
We can, we can work a different way.
That'd be a helpful tool. I, it's a time I talked about this. It's just a tool for us as we're deciding.
Got it. Yeah, as long as it's easy. Thanks, Dave.
Anything else? Thank you, guys, very much. Thanks, Jim, for doing the audit. And then, of course, we're thrilled to have you work with our team here, and thanks, Dave and Tracy especially, and your team. I know there's so much work that's gone into this the last few years to get it up to speed and really buffed out. But in addition, this report, I felt like, was a great tool to walk a layperson through the numbers, and I really appreciated all the work that went into that reporting. So thank you, guys, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Planning Commission decisions. Anything to discuss here?
Just a comment that applaud the Highlands Golf Course for organizing all those homeowners for the fire mitigation. That's a lot of work, and it's really difficult. So I think it's great that they took those steps.
Yeah, sixty-five parcels. That's pretty amazing that they got that much take rate for that.
They're all easy to work with.
I had a question about one of the projects, not intended to be a call-up, and then a couple of comments.
Here he comes. Thanks, Chris.
Chris, my question concerns the Tamarack residence, which is the most recent scrape project. And one of the things that I noticed, and this is where my question comes from. The council, upon, I think, planning commission conversations and then the planning department's work, enacted a rule that limited the number of fireplaces in a residence after being confronted with seven fireplaces. This particular proposal includes three indoor gas fireplaces and then an outdoor propane fire pit. And when the ordinance was enacted, we gave the homeowner the opportunity to choose two indoor, one outdoor. Please. I'm wondering where the outdoor propane fire pit comes into play in that and how you look at that as far as a gas fireplace.
Since propane's, I guess, not regulated as a utility, and it's something that kind of probably doesn't meet the spirit of the code, but it does meet the code, ultimately similar to a propane grill when we're looking at RAMP, where one that is hardwired into natural gas has to be factored in for RAMP, or an outdoor heater that runs off a propane tank versus being hardwired into it also does not qualify for RAMP. So that is something that, you know, was discussed, and when we were dealing with RAMP more specifically than when we were dealing with the fireplace ordinance, and kind of did not address it because it's so hard to regulate people going and getting canisters of propane, where we can see that gas is purchased, you know, through a utility.
Yeah, when we were talking about this, we talked about how restaurants, you know, they might roll out three one night, six the next night, none. And so it is just, it's really hard to regulate. I feel like that's kind of what our decision on not taking that step was based on.
Just struck me as a way to have your three fireplaces and get your fourth one as a bonus.
Yeah, and we've seen, this is, I think, the first time for a propane one, we've seen where people have done one EPA phase two, one or two natural gas inside, and then one natural gas outside. And that kind of stretches it to one, because we only allow one EPA phase two, and that's a way to get the four. But this is the first one, I think, we've seen where we saw, like, propane in the mix for this one.
When made their outside fireplace, a wood fire, wood burning fireplace. So they ended up with three in, one out, one propane. Interesting. Anyway. That was my only question. I didn't know how that factored.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're correct in saying it's not meeting the spirit of where we're going things, but meets the code.
Well put.
People always find a way, don't they?
Surprisingly, on things that you would think wouldn't be the deal breaker, but you're correct, Dick.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Anything else?
Kind of the spirit of our last conversation when Dick and I both raised this point. This was a scrape of a 2,600 square foot home. It's being replaced by a 6,400 square foot home. And something maybe for us to think about, they did qualify for 500 square foot bonus density, which upped that again probably to the tune of at least one bedroom in the home. So they're ending up with a six-bedroom home, which allows for sixteen people in what probably used to be a three- or four-person home. So we're seeing the impact of the scrapes and how they increase the density in the neighborhoods. It's my comment.
Yep. Good point. All right. Thank you very much, Steve. Legislative review, amendment to public parks section of town codes, second reading. John's way quicker than last two weeks ago.
Two weeks, maybe no more crunch.
Less grimacing.
Yeah. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is the second reading of the amendment to the parks ordinance. Once again, this is just a cleanup and an update on what we're doing. Any questions?
Questions for John? All right. I think we're all set. Thank you. Mid-year budget appropriation, first reading. Get the team back.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Council. Tracy and I are here to walk through some changes that have occurred since the budget of November of last year. Felt we wanted to get this in as we're working through the 2025 budgeting process. And she's gonna go through the information in the letter, and we'll answer any questions you have.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Town Council. Just want to highlight a couple of summarizations, really, that are part of the appropriation. The first one speaks to the e-delivery pilot program. I just want to call out that even though there was a change in the projection of the capital project of increasing that by an additional 1.75 million, that is not considered within this appropriation, because we feel like there is enough reduction in other capital projects that are planned for this year that we won't need to ask for any money. So I just want to call that out, because it'll probably be something that you're wondering where that was. So let's focus on what we are asking for. Calling out for the workforce housing fund, there are really a couple of timing items that were from 2023 that were brought forward. And that was, we had an appropriation last year in December where we were going to require more funds from the excise fund to transfer over to the housing to stand the housing fund up. And even though that was approved, the actual journal entry did not occur. So that is something we will be booking in July. So it's kind of a net effect, and it's just, you know.
And what we had thought with that was that we would true up housing at the end of this year. But since there were some other items related to housing, we're proposing to do that now.
A couple of things that we are pulling forward that were planned for 2025 budget, and that is for the Vista Verde two loan. We paid that out a little earlier than planned, so that's going to change our restriction. And then for the Larkspur expenses that were planned in 2025 have occurred a little earlier in 2024. So those dollars that would have been spent in 2025 are poured forward. So overall, we have sort of timing adjustments of around just slightly over seven million. In order to make that happen, we really have to look to the excise fund to transfer money out of that towards the workforce housing. So there's going to be a transfer of just 10.8 million that will occur between those two funds. With regards to the other appropriations, we had a purchase, a joint purchase out of the general fund for the Baldy Road that will be an asset that we are holding for our own use. So the appropriation is asking for 688,000 for that. We are also looking for, in the housing fund, in addition to the items that I spoke about, there was an additional 2.1 million for the stables infrastructure, which is a capital spend that is occurring in this year. And then we have some little offset from additional revenue for rental income and the shared agreement we have with the Summit County Housing Authority that will benefit us. The last appropriation is for the open space. We had purchased Little Daisy Load earlier this year, and then just recently with a Lizzie Load purchase that was not planned for, so that's an appropriation request of 5.3 million. And then finishing off with the Timberline Learning Center expansion, 750,000, and that's for the childcare fund that we are requesting. This is a first reading and open for questions.
Thanks, Tracy. Questions?
Tracy, that 750,000 for Timberline is in addition to what was already budgeted?
Correct. Yep. We had, I think, about 450,000 in the budget for '24. But there's money that was restricted, so this is just putting more in the appropriation for expense. We do have restrictions to help cover that in the housing or in the childcare fund.
Forward expenses from '25 into '24. Does that, sounds like a silly question, but do we realize that next year, will there be, like, a line item where, you know, well, we would have had, you know, seven or 10 million dollars in expense here, but we pulled that forward to '24, so we no longer have that?
If it's related to a loan, which in this case, the timing was for Vista Verde two, when we did the five-year plan, we had that occurring in 2025. Twenty-five's not going to change, but we would have had a higher transfer from excise in '25 to cover that. Well, we're taking care of that now. And so '25 should be better by that amount, because we won't, we're recognizing that now from that perspective. We aren't showing the increase of the loan for Vista Verde. With regards to, I would say, the other timing items that we have, if we look at, let's say, Larkspur and the delays of some of the spend for Larkspur from '23 to '24, the overall project is still within budget. And so from what was presented to spend on the completion of the apartments, that really didn't change. But as a matter of getting that corrected, that's not going to impact any future years, because it was really more of a timing of '23 and '24, getting that appropriated correctly.
Thank you so much.
All right. I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, managers' report. We're into public projects update. Spending the money.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We have the memo updating a bit on what's going on with overlay and concrete. We're still out there working hard. Lots more areas to finish. And also, there is a update on the Schoonover project. As detailed in the memo, we are looking at a budget shortfall of about $100,000 to complete the work, as well as a schedule delay. Staff is proposing using the budget for the Living Lab Plaza to cover this year's expense, because a Living Lab Plaza will be shifting into next year.
And just 100,000 from the Living Lab?
And then we'll roll over and then budget again in 2025 for the remainder.
Okay. Does everybody feel comfortable with that instead of doing the new appropriation? Bringing Tracy and Dave right back up here. All right. That sounds good. Any other questions?
I have a question. Not related to these projects, but when I was looking at the audit and looking at asphalt overlays over the last number of years, seems like we're doing a lot less of recent years, it appeared, spending less. And are we on a pace that you're comfortable with to keep the roads up?
I think we are doing as much work as the contractor and the public can handle, honestly. Our budget this year was 3.7, and we are forecasting to bring it down to 2.5 million next year. But I can bump that back up if you do feel like we're falling behind. I'm feeling good about our program.
Yeah, I'm more asking you, as you do your long-term planning and keeping, you know, maintenance, keeping our roads at the standard that we want to. Are we on pace? Are you comfortable with pace?
I am. We have a couple more downtown roads to hit next year, then we're looking at going into Warrior's Mark quite a bit, than always trying to catch up in the Highlands.
They have a really cool, we shared it with the county, because we thought it was so cool, but they, you know, it's a table that's also geolocated, and it says exactly what the timing is and age and what the level of service and everything.
I knew she would know. That's why I asked.
We'll ask for more budget if we need to, but I think we're solid right now.
Yeah, I should have assumed that. Thanks.
Anything else on public projects? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Mobility.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm covering mobility update for tonight. Only additional thing to add to the memo is just reporting back about eRide ridership on Fourth of July. It was our highest ridership day of the year last year with 268 trips. And this year, we came in at 452 trips. So feeling good there.
Well done. Were you really? Dick was riding it around on Fourth of July.
All right.
But he drew the firecracker on one?
That we caught.
Who afraid of Nico? All right. I think that's it. Thanks, Teddy. Real incognito today. Sustainability, Jesse. They still couldn't beat those connecting kids.
Too easy.
Yep.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. We are one week and one day into our plastics prohibition. we are one week and one day into our plastics prohibition. Um, I think it's going pretty well. We've had some comments um supporting it and thanking the community for doing this. We've also had some questioning why we did it or um the recyclability of some of the plastics that we did eliminate. But overall, I think it's going pretty well. We continue to field a couple of um reports, if you will, of people, uh restaurants, businesses still using a couple of items. Most particularly, the confusion is around plant-based plastics. Um, not just ones that are labeled compostable, but ones that are derived from agave or sugar cane, things like that. So we continue to do outreach um in that respect. And we did get some good media coverage right around uh July first on it as well. So um word was getting out certainly. Uh, do you want to remind everybody that the material management grant is still available to help support implementation, not only of this, universal recycling? Um, and then also uh water refill stations around the community. So we still have funds available this year to support those grants. And I did reach out to the village um just today to remind them about that and then also put a plug in for a water refill station. Trying to get in contact with some folks at Main Street Station to do the same. Um, quickly back on plastics, uh, we did have a hard deadline for inventory, so we are not allowing people um to use up the rest of their inventory. And so if they do have inventory, we have donation options available to them. They're listed in the memo. Cafe Food Rescue just reached out again today. Um, they are able to package and share those materials with other food banks uh down on the front range as well. So um, if anyone out there listening, uh, to get rid of your stuff, uh, contact Cafe Food Rescue, certainly. Um, Fourth of July, uh, related to water, we deployed our first uh portable water refill stations. One was at Carter Park and the other was at the Blue River Plaza. We know that the Blue River Plaza filled four hundred and fifty bottles. Um, while it was deployed for the four or five days that it was out there. We don't have the number from Carter Park, um, because it's inside the pavilion and we didn't pull that number yet. Um, so it's getting good use, good visibility. We will have our new water brand. Uh, I wouldn't say wrapped. It's not going to be the entire thing, but the, the sides of it are going to have the, the water brand on it. So when it's standing um out in the middle of Blue River Plaza, people will be able to see that. Um, related to that, paid advertising for Breck Water has started. Um, we got our illustrate, or not illustration, our painting, which we're looking to um to hang in one of the facilities, but the Breck Water, this is related to the tap and drinking water campaign um has, has been rolled out. So you'll start more of that pop up on digital ads in the print media, et cetera. Um, and then finally, related to unified watering schedules, um, sent out a couple of additional property management company emails. They did go to all the Highlands. Thank you. Uh, Steve, for the, the list of the Highland property management companies. Um, I'm not sure if they actually sent that on to homeowners or not. Um, but I, my understanding is Julia is doing a dark sky education workshop with the Highlands as well. So we'll tag team on with them to do more unified watering schedule education there. And also PD is out doing education when they see watering during the daytime, uh, which is the easiest thing to identify related to the watering schedules. They have stopped and um educated homeowners. So that is ongoing as well. Happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you for all the work on the plastic pollution's uh education. I know that you've been uh contacted by businesses who were unaware of it, even though it's been a year and a half. But and I, I know it's, it's, I, I'm really pleased with the direction it's going and that it is, it's changing behaviors. And I think uh your team's leading a great job on that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, when it comes to the water buggy, I, I was, we were looking for it on the Fourth of July. Where, was it right in the middle? Did you see it?
I was so proud of it.
We're looking everywhere. But I think that uh we, we may have that deployed throughout the summer until temperatures decrease for the, the riverwalk.
So TBD, the, the idea that we're hoping for is that uh for private event producers, it will be available to rent and deploy. Um, or we have it out and available um in public spaces. We have some internal um details to iron out related to, now that we have them in hand, knowing what it, it does take a lift gate truck, for example, to move them around. Um, they do have dolly wheels and you can kind of move them in around.
Shift.
Yeah, shift them around. Um, but when they have to be moved and deployed, um, it does take a little bit more effort. So we have some more internal details to iron out related to that. But the idea would be that when they fill out the CIPA form, they see that plastics aren't allowed, no plastic water bottles. Do you want to rent our water refill station kind of thing? Um, so more to, more to come on that.
If it's not being used for an event, can we have it deployed at the riverwalk? And the, the reason for my ask is that when I went to fill up our water bottles, we went downstairs to the welcome center, through the bathrooms and maze of people. And it, it was more of a lift than it needed to be, and especially for guests that aren't, aren't using the new BTO app and don't know it's down there. Uh, that would be a really great place because of the gathering nature.
I, I don't see why not. Our, our one concern is just around potential vandalism because it is kind of a its own thing.
Derek put uh cameras up there, didn't he? Um, and then just the other question is um on water, you know, we had talked about kind of, you know, the, the schedule. I'm curious if there is, on the towns projects, if there's a way to get rain sensor irrigation sensors. Um, where, you know, one day it was pouring out rain and then driving past Larkspur and the sprinklers are going off. Um, and I would love for the town to be a leader in, in, in some of that technology. And if it's not possible for, to retrofit that, just moving in on Vista Verde and some of the other projects um uh up at the stables, if we could kind of engage some of that technology so that when our residents, when we're asking residents not to water while it's raining, and that we're not as well.
Um, I, I can't speak to what's out there now. I do know that Steve and Kyle, Steve, when he was with Parks and now Kyle have been paying a lot of attention to retrofitting and better tuning in our ear, our own irrigation for this reason. Um, they're also looking at opportunities where we can replace turf most specifically. I don't know whether or not rain sensors are deployed and if they are, where those are at. Um, we can, friend's not working, so. But we can, we can with some more detail on that.
That's a good point. We might want to put that in the building ordinance for new construction that it has to, they have to have those controls if they want to irrigate. I mean, that might be a, a tweak, tweak of building ordinance.
And you, and you see it on both sides, right? Like I don't, I think I was talking to Kelly when uh we had some of those um late May snowstorms, you could see the
Oh, yeah.
The uh snow melt systems that were still on in late May or early June, maybe it was, just from that little dusting, you could see the marks. And just, you know, I think those are some of the low hanging fruit that we can start attacking and.
But mostly, if you're driving by, it shouldn't have been on anyway. Because it, shouldn't it be on in the middle of the night? Isn't it supposed to be on from like nine till four in?
Yeah, right. So it should be watering in the middle of the night anyway, also.
So maybe there's something to check in, unless you were driving by when it was open up.
I tend to do that.
Well.
Okay, so I've got potentially uh landscape new construction, our own town projects, whether it's rain sensors or also timing. Yeah, okay. And plans for future smart outdoor irrigator. I do know where this is somewhat related, but not totally the same thing as what you're mentioning, Jay, but that is through the um smart meter, uh, smart meters for water just in general, so that it just makes all of our meters smarter. We can look at real time. It, it just improves the whole system. So it has a trickle down effect, but um outdoor irrigation certainly has a tendency to be forgotten, turned on once, and then that's the last time it gets checked forever. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Care to mess with it? Um, just for my edification, you mentioned that you've had a lot of questions about um stuff, the plastic cups that are made from agave. Are those allowed or not allowed?
No.
Okay. So if it looks like plastic, it's not allowed? Okay. Great. Thank you.
Are you, I'm sorry, before you leave, just expert a question. Are you at all concerned for using plastic cups for Oktoberfest as I confuse the message? And how are we, how would you like us to frame the conversation when the difference between our cup, it's reusable and then what we're trying to eliminate is single use?
Yeah, I, I have this, not just about Oktoberfest, but the same concern. And I think we just talk about it in terms of reusable, durable. These are the same cups you're going to get at Oktoberfest next year. You know, like they, um, we've had some confusion over some of the more hefty to-go boxes too, um, because they, they continue to have markings on them that are like, oh, it's microwave safe or it's dishwasher safe, but that doesn't mean it's designed to be reused over and over again. Our cup is designed to be reused over and over again. Um, so I think just single-use plastics, reusable, dishware. I would love if that was something else besides plastic, but.
Yeah.
At this time.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Jesse.
And James, the phone a friend worked a little bit. So James um just mentioned that they are looking at putting a water bottle fill station on the outside of the welcome center.
That'd be terrific. Great. Thank you, guys. Thanks, James. All right, housing update. Lori. What do you have for us?
Um, well, actually, I don't have any minutes in your packet.
Wonderful.
Um, so unless you have some questions, I don't have anything new to share.
Questions for Lori? I'd look like something. No, all right. No? Wow.
Yay. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Um, there is no open space update?
Oh.
There is.
Well, there is no.
Oh, there is a very.
But we'd like to embarrass Duke.
There's no update, but. Let's just embarrass him. You have to come down, dude. You have to come down and you have to introduce yourselves.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Um, Duke Barlow, new Open Space and Trails manager, and I'm excited to be, be in the position.
We have a great Open Space and Trails team, so we're very excited to have you, have that whole team. Anything, anyone want to just ask a really tough question right off? All right, well, welcome to you.
Thank you very much.
We'll look forward to talking to you lots more.
Me too. Thanks.
Um, committee reports. I think we only had some at stage, right? Anything on that? Okay. Communications update. Ellen Brook. Laura, we're going to have the whole team. Awesome.
Welcome.
Hello. Mayor and Council. Um, so in your packet is kind of just an overview of our department and what we're working on with communications and marketing. Um, we outlined a lot of our tactics as well as some of our goals and focuses. Um, one of the things we really wanted to kind of hone in on too is our websites because we just redid our main website. Um, and then we also have several other websites and sometimes that can be a little bit confusing, but we do have our main town of Breck website, our recreation, golf and transit are all under the same kind of umbrella and back-end CMS system. The other ones, oh, and transit, did I say transit? I don't know if I forgot, but, and then sustainability, open space and housing are all other subsites that we also have, but we don't typically oversee those ones. Um, and then we have Recreation, which is kind of a Nets world, and she does a lot of the communication and marketing. So we um, and put a lot of stuff in there. And then we also have Equity and Translation and um that kind of realm with Laura in our department. So, did you guys have any questions about what was in the packet?
Thank you. Questions on the communication strategy?
Well, it's really grown. It's awesome. I mean, I've, the, the um uh, in many ways it's grown. I mean, I think it's more detailed now and, and um in the, the Spanish, you would see a lot more Spanish um translation, which is fantastic. So great work.
I think, uh, thank you for the memo is great. And this is something that has been um a passion of mine is looking at how we're communicating with our community. And just to, you know, frame the conversation, you know, we're focusing on residents and second homeowners primarily. We're, we're allowing the BTO to hand off to the guest communication. And so when you, when you kind of frame in that um in that, you know, narrower terms, I was just curious how uh your monitoring results and what your metrics are on, on some of these uh tactics that you're using on, what's your open rate, what's the click-through rate on some of those things? And are you tracking those to see how we're doing and what is being effective um on our communications?
Yeah, so I mean, we use a platform to post for our social media and we do have some analytics, which is usually what I um share in like a year wrap-up. And that was in the packet, I think, in January of this year, or last year's. Um, I don't think I included anything about email marketing, so I apologize for that. And that is something that we do have, like with our newsletters that are included in this um update. So we can get you guys some metrics on that with click-through rates and open rates. And then um, we also have some analytics on our digital ads through the Summit Daily as well. Um, we kind of monitor and see with our social media for getting a lot of engagement and what isn't. And for some of them, we can opt out of doing some of those if it's not getting engagement, but some of them, it is important information that we just have to get out there anyways. Regardless if people are seeing it or not. So that's kind of how we monitor some of the stuff we're putting out.
Right. And I think that you, you alluded to the email. And I think that when you look at um, if you go to the Town of Breck website and then go into government to subscribe, there's a fantastic forum that's there that is it's, it's brilliant in the fact that you get to pick what you're interested in. You can select everything from public projects down to rec events to whatever you're interested in. And I, I would just think that we do a disservice to it because it is buried. And that I would love to see that to be more present um on the website as well as um something that can get to our new residents, our new homeowners. Uh, one of the ideas, I, I, I went to multiple people to try to get ideas on, on this work session. Um, one of the, I thought one of the greatest ideas was a welcome to Breck um packet email one pager. And at first it was kind of recommended that we go to uh realtors and ask them when they sell a house, if we can, you know, include that in their packet. And um I just want to say, well, if you're trying to get to every realtor, you're going to have a hard time. And why don't you just go to the title companies? And if we approach like the, I think there's three title companies, is that right? Two. Uh, even better, right? If we can ask them to include a one pager that will get them to that subscribe uh page of uh for emails. And you know, I think that's important to kind of address some of that second homeowner uh uh sentiment uh that we've been kind of battling that they don't feel like, that they're getting all their information from the Summit Daily and not getting it directly from us. And when it comes down to our, our voice needs to be advocacy and kind of acknowledging what strides the town is doing to make people's lives better and for additions. And I think that can be a really strong tool. Um, and I really think that, that email or even if employing a text um, a, a text push campaign for things that are maybe a little bit more urgent and uh allowing people to know, I think some of the uh more loud uh present items that we've seen is, I'm not sure about you guys, but the activity that's happening on McCain with the access road. How many phone calls, texts I've gotten going, how many houses are you putting on here? Or what are you doing over there? You know, what are you digging up now? Are you redoing the river? People don't know that it's just a public works access road. And um I think that would be a really valuable uh piece to kind of push out things that are very visible. Other things that we have uh, maybe struggled with is, you know, our OS uh, Bosak open houses, uh, different co- uh, coffee talks as well as our ballot measures that we're looking for. And I know there's some rules around the ballot measures that we need to be careful about. But kind of, I I understand the social media, we get really great reach and it's cheap. Um, but also kind of explores, you know, leaning heavier into that email, perhaps a push text uh, option, I think would be really beneficial. Um, I know that people typically only engage when something is being taken away or being made more expensive. Um, but at the same time, our we have 5,000 residents uh, that are busy to have, you know, families, jobs. If we can reach out more, um, I think that would be, would help all of us with our advocacy and getting, you know, the message across. Um, and I that that subscribe, I would love to see a push on that subscribe page to um, kind of entice people. I know we're not really for physical postcards right now uh, or in general. But if we can try to send it out to, you know, the way that we sent out the resident settlement survey to on a regular basis, maybe annually to try to capture the the people that have enjoyed. Uh, one of the things I noticed through the audit that was that we were talking about earlier is that we are employers, right? We have Vail Resorts, then BGV, and then the town. And I think the fourth largest employer is like Whiskey Star or something, right? Like, there's a huge gap. So I I think that there is at least 75% of new employees we can capture through three, but through three people. You know, one of us is us, uh, the town. And if we can use that to try to get that out. But information is power, um, allowing people perceptions reality. If people understand motivations, what things are happening, what we're doing to make our um, experience here is better, what we're doing to empower our second homeowners, I think all of that is very important.
Do you um, do you know what the most successful median is? Um, sorry, Helen, on.
Sorry, what was that? Emails, Annette says emails for sure. I think that we, I mean, because those directly go into people's inboxes. And so we can see kind of the open rate on those.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I feel like the most inconsistent one is social media because you just
Yeah.
never know what's going to take or how often you have to post and all that kind of stuff, but yeah.
Jay, I just wanted to address a couple of um, of your points that you made. Um, specifically the um, other employers. We do um, make an effort always to participate in the BGV Wellness Fair. And I know Annette was just speaking to that the other day um, in a conversation we were having with Open Space. Well, we met with Open Space today, so we're going to get on a um, a good meeting schedule with them to have regular communications meetings. And um, as part of that, we've encouraged them to attend the BGV um, there to as part of their trails initiatives with some of the other count um, town initiatives that will bring to that wellness fair. We're trying to get all town information out through, partially through this department um, and have everything kind of overseen by us. So I'm trying to think the other points you made. Um, you talked specifically about the button on the website. Yeah, we definitely need a kind of a bigger call to action. It is on the top of the main page. It's called Sign Me Up. Um, but it's small, so you, that's a really good point. Um, and then um, yeah, I'm trying, you had a list. It's trying to capture all of those things, but um, some of those things we recognize are gaps and we're going to start addressing more now that we have a full team.
Yeah, it's great to have a full team. I was just thinking with the email, like where, when you were talking about the three employers having, I mean, if emails is one of our best mediums, it seems like that's, that'd be pretty easy to hit the those people, the emails, but.
Yeah, and we, and I think that's a big part of like the community engagement aspect that Laura is going to bring to our team. Um, is that we are going to try it different ways to get in front of the employees and try and get um, instead of just social media or, you know, because if you're not paying attention to our social media, if you're not following us or if you're not subscribed to the emails, you're not going to see those things.
Right.
So getting it in front of them in a way that they're already paying attention is kind of our goal too. So it's great.
Hi, you asked for packet questions. Mine are, mine are packet adjacent. Um, so they may not be in here because they're not your responsibility, which is one answer. Um, one of them is kind of branching off of Jay's, like the the less sexy announcements. So how are we getting out things like half of this parking lot is being striped today? It's only half open. There's a marathon that's staging out of this parking lot. It's closed. And I think getting that information out is so important to residents. Um, I remember times at the rec center where we've had paving happening and a blood drive. So only half the parking lot is open. Plus, there's a lot of blood drive parking, so people who are regular fitness classgoers or are trying to pick kids up from camp are just frustrated because they didn't know it was happening. And so I'm hoping that um, either through email or the text pushes that we can get that kind of more boring information out in a timely fashion. And then the question that may not be you guys is, is this team going to be helping with um, helping the different departments with engagement? So we're doing something and we want to look at a neighborhood and we need to find all the stakeholders in that group. And I think sometimes as departments, and I will just take responsibility, I used to do this myself, right? Sometimes we're not reaching out to people who may disagree with us or not like our idea. Um, and I'm, I'm wondering if you guys are just going to maybe help identify who those stakeholders are, reach out to those stakeholders, make sure they're included early on so that we're not kind of chasing our tail when people are upset or we have to change tactics at a certain spot.
Yeah, I think typically um, it's kind of up to the departments to do that. And we kind of do the marketing push. So if they need flyers or if they want us to create an email or something like that, we can do that. And then that's kind of on them to do that. However, now that we're focusing a little bit more on community engagement and we do have Laura and we want to reach out to those like underrepresented like community members and things like that, I do think that it is going to somewhat fall under us to help with that expertise.
And yeah, I don't expect you necessarily know who the stakeholders are, but maybe know who to ask to get some stakeholder ideas.
Yeah. Things we'll talk a lot about too is the questions to ask themselves. Um, we'll help them process through that, through the equity lens, which you guys will look at next meeting. But how do we start thinking about the people who are not at the meeting or not at the table that should be? Um, and people that we've missed. Um, so kind of not telling them what to do or tell them what to think, but telling them the questions that they need to ask themselves so that they can start doing it themselves as well and feel empowered to do so as a department head or as a department team. Um, and then we can be kind of that voice of advocacy and the voice of what do you need from us or how can we help you?
That's great. And Marieke, I'll just say for our parking lots that are, excuse me, managed by Breck Park, they do, they generally do a really good job of pushing out to all permit holders. And then our Public Works Department will sign the lots in advance so that people who park there regularly have a good idea of what's going on. Um, we can certainly do a better job in our law, our facility lots, which aren't controlled by them.
I, you know, I love the pushing out the Sign Me Up button. And I think that's great because that gets to the strategic point of the the citizens decide what they want, you know? Because I think we, if we just start shotgunning, then I think we are in great danger of sending too much. So I think there's a very strategic approach and probably at the top is really pushing out that Sign Me Up page because there is such a thing as too much, in my opinion. And I think we need to be very strategic in how we do it, um, as I think you guys are. And um, but um, you know, I know people, we all get a lot of communication electronically and the emails, texts, you know, these push messages. And yeah, I think we got to be careful because we do too much and we're going to get shut off. We're going to get blocked, so.
The one other thing I wanted to add was um, regarding Text My Gov. Because you've seen that on our website and we recently, sorry, we recently reinstated it on our um, on our new site. And so it was gone for a little while. We definitely recognize we probably need to do an additional push for it because we had pretty good engagement on Text My Gov where they sign up. Well, they, they can sign up that way, um, but also they can send us questions. The hardest thing with Text My Gov is that it has to be manned by or, you know, monitored by physical people. And so outside of business hours, like on weekends when people think to text us, we're not actually monitoring it. And we do have an auto response saying that. So as an alternative, what we're looking into in the future is an AI based system, which, you know, doesn't sound super fun um, to have an AI voice instead of a person. But um, it's way more effective to answering the types of questions we get through Text My Gov, which are like, you know, where do I park on a Saturday, you know? Or somebody texted this past weekend, what's the weather? I mean, things that we don't typically typically answer, but I mean, we get all the time through the system, but AI could do for us. So I think it would be um, a much better use of our resources in the future. But Text My Gov does have that really great push feature for emergencies and we have used it in some road closure closure situations and we hope to use it more in the future. But yeah, we'll, we'll do some additional push for that.
What's the weather? All right, anything else on communications? Thank you very much. This is a very important part of what we're all doing here. So glad to have a team now working on it. Okay, legislative update.
Uh, so in your packet, you have um, the Colorado Municipal League's laws enacted, which we get annually. Um, it comes out at about the time of the annual conference, which just occurred. Um, we have, just to zoom out for a second, we have our legislative advocacy policy, which is how we interface with the state during the session. But then a more labor intensive at the close of the session is looking at how the bills might affect um, the town operations. And so um, I know our senior um, leadership team is looking at the list of bills to try to determine whether we need to change practices or policies or ordinances. Um, and that will be kind of a to do depending on the effective date of the bills and and what the impacts are. Um, I don't know if you want me to highlight some of them or if you want to just take questions. I'm happy to um, answer anything about the list of the laws enacted. And and these are just the ones that impact municipalities. It, it's amazing how you track them all session and you still kind of find out little nuances that you didn't expect to see in there. Um, so, so would you like me to, I, even the ones I kind of handpicked as important, it, the list is still pretty long.
So the ones you handpicked as important were highlighted in yellow in the packet?
Okay, good, yes.
Um, so probably, I don't think we necessarily need to go through um, a bunch unless there's one or two that you for sure want to discuss with people or we can just move on to questions.
I would just move on to questions. Um, I will say overall, I feel like there wasn't a lot of damage done. There were a few bills that were really concerning and um, they were postponed indefinitely or, you know, or didn't get through the Senate. So overall, I think um, you know, we, we have a lot of impacts, but not things that are are alarming or anything like that. So yeah, I'm just happy to take any question.
It sounds good. Any questions on things in the packet? Or I think also Shannon mentioned that there are some things that CML didn't highlight that senior leadership is also reviewing and going to bring to our attention. But this seemed like a lot and we thought breaking it into two pieces seemed fine. So um, if people have questions on what's in this packet, we can give them to Kirsten. Give your questions.
My only question, Kirsten, is what's on the radar that you think is most dangerous to us as a municipality in our ski town, mountain town environment?
Well, the one thing that you'll see from last session to this session, so um, in the 2023 session was the SB 213, which was the big land use bill that would have preempted us in a, in a massive way. And we would have lost control of land use uh, land use legislation and zoning. Um, that got completely scaled back this session. Uh, there's only one bill of all of the land use bills that will impact the town. And that is um, it's SB 174, I think, and it has to do with um, housing assessments. And we will have to comply with some new rules from DOLA. The remainder of the land use bills impact only jurisdictions that are in like Dr. Cog and the planning organizations. But my prediction is that we will see over time, you know, amendments to those that could try to incorporate um, communities like ours. So uh, but but I also think there's such a significant dichotomy going on in sustainability. And I know Jesse has, Burley has plans to talk to you about um, those bills as well. It, those are tough because there are certain things that we can do better in the town if we have local control. But there's others that if it's not a statewide issue, it's hard to make progress. So I would say that would be the other area that we will want to really closely watch.
Thank you.
Todd, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to say on, actually connected into SB 174, you know, I'd love for Lori and the team to kind of keep an eye on. They mentioned um, although not required, local governments may create neighborhood centers that may qualify for prioritized future grant funding. Um, so just would love to keep an eye on that to see if it fits for our community and there's opportunities there.
Anything else? Do you want to add anything?
Well, I'll just say, Todd, to your point, um, we absolutely are keeping track of those and we're looking, or we're working really closely with DOLA to try to to get funding where it fits for our community. Um, you know, we submitted a grant application for stables that we thought was, it was a really good fit, right? You've got um, e-bikes, you've got transit, you're right across the street from a childcare center. And they told us we didn't meet the requirements of the grant and those were things that were requirements of the grant. Um, and we, you know, we went back and sat with them to try to understand. Um, and they just said, no, you don't. Like it needs to be, the childcare center needs to be in the housing development. You don't have enough transit. You don't have a um, a park and ride, right? There are all these things that really just don't fit with our community. It's really geared geared more towards a rural area. So we'll, we're going to continue to work on that. Um, Prop 123 is another, was an opportunity, you know, that they touted to provide housing funding. And there is no for sale funding. So if you're building a for sale neighborhood, they don't have any funding for that. Um, so we keep working on it and keeping an eye on things. It just aren't structuring those opportunities for communities like ours.
Thanks for the hard work there. Sorry, it's been fruitless and yeah.
Bye. And DOLA has, I mean, I will say DOLA has been very supportive where there's a path for us.
So I wonder if there's an angle there where we can work at like almost like a higher level to be like, hey, you've got to come up with some funding and structure here that benefits these rural mountain communities, right? Because
Yep.
we're the ones that are short on housing.
Yeah.
More than others. Awesome. Thank you for the hard work.
Okay.
And I, I point out just our, our Senator and our, our rep, you know, the Speaker have really supported us on a lot of these threats and as uh, you know, Julie's government reelection. So um, we could support and uh, it maybe while we're talking to them, Todd, we can um, mention that, you know, some stuff that's resort rural geared funding, you know, would be very much appreciated. But they've been super supportive, as we all know, but uh, they've been great in helping us with threatening bills.
They have been. All right, um, I think I'm going to take a break since we're a little ahead.
Thank you.
Five minute break.
Go with Simmons.
You know,
Elena, for coming, we're happy to have you to talk about Blue River Pathways.
Thank you, Mayor Owens, members of council. Good afternoon. Good to see you again. We also have Tori Idala and Ellie Nyquist on the line. In case we have additional questions or dimensions, they can pull things for us. As you know, we're here to talk about the Blue River Pathways master plan. The purpose of the plan is to enhance the Blue River Corridor through downtown Breckenridge, especially as it relates to circulation, placemaking, and the environmental quality of the river and its health. At our last meeting on May 28th, I look at, I get to scroll this and see, here we go. At our last meeting on May 28th, we had a really good discussion about the Gold Pan Alley. So today we're going to focus on that and the changes that we've made based on your input. I have the goals up right now. I think one of the important things about that discussion was, you know, we talked about how the community goals relate to our project goals. But we spent quite a bit of time talking about the importance of our economy and ensuring that as we're balancing out all of the goals for this project, that we are thinking about our business owners, employees, and, and keeping Breckenridge running and open, especially weeks like this week. Very important to have all of our team. Why we have a master plan, Shannon included a link in the packet to the master plan draft that was developed in February, and issued in February of 2024. We wanted to do a pretty high-level overview of what's in that in case any of our new council members had any questions about that or we wanted to dive deeper. But as a whole, we use the master plan as a guiding document for future improvements to the river corridor. This master plan focused specifically between French and Park Avenue. And that was divided into segments. So we looked at segments based on primary infrastructure routes, like major roads or other destinations that really influence what happens in each of those segments. For each of those segments, then, we dive much deeper into findings, analysis, and recommendations. These are all high-level because as a master plan, we're not really, you know, designing anything for it to be built at this point. We're really making recommendations for the future so that as we move forward with any capital improvement projects, we have the community engagement established. We know overall how we want to connect all the way through downtown. And we know areas that are of great interest and importance to the community. Lastly, grant applications, like we were just talking about, having a master plan in place that shows that you've engaged the community and really thought a lot about each of the different segments of the river is really important. For the different segments, for each segment, we have five specific areas that we focus on, those findings and opportunities in the master plan. One is ownership and existing conditions. The reason that ownership is really important in the corridor is in some areas, the town has a lot of ownership. And in other areas, it's very constrained. So it's important for us as we look at the overall context of potential improvements, knowing where the town already owns land or where other partnerships may be needed, or where we may have to be really creative in our design in order to make proposals work. Connectivity is another section that's really important. Part of the packet included the overall map showing the connectivity from French to Park Avenue. Hopefully you were able to look at that. But in segment by segment, we look at how to ensure that bicycle connectivity and pedestrian connectivity is happening through downtown and creating safer crossings wherever possible within our infrastructure. On the environment side of things, we're looking at the river health, habitat, the amount of shade on the river, wetlands, steep slopes, where drainage is coming off of private property. Any of those things are going to impact the, the health and quality of the river as a whole. On the maintenance and operations side of things, this still functions in a lot of areas as a back of house for the businesses. And so how do we combine our placemaking efforts on our other goals, but also ensure that business owners have access to deliveries, to trash and recycling and composting, and the other elements that just really keep us all working? And lastly, but most fun, placemaking, and that is to ensure that the identity of the community is instilled throughout the river corridor, really knowing that you're in Breckenridge, you're on the Blue River, and that those opportunities to experience the river and the environment are really good and just make you feel really happy about where you are. So that's the master plan in a very fast nutshell. I'm sure there will be more questions. But that's kind of the, how we set it up. And the goal for the plan really was that it wasn't a text-heavy document, but more of a graphic-heavy document that had a lot of bullet point, quick information, easy to digest for people. On the outreach side of things, just as a reminder, we conducted outreach from March to August of last year. That included stakeholder meetings, segment by segment, with business owners, employees, property owners. We met with some of the really important agencies and local organizations like the BTO, Breck Create, and Breck History. We had a survey that was online and also included a mapping tool. So people could mark their, you know, some key features and locations along the river that were important to them. And we also attended the town park event and had a booth there where people could draw on a map or just hang out with us, you know, put a post-it on. All that combined led to this infographic that's up on the screen right now. And, you know, even just talking to council, talking to the community people, we're very much on the same page in terms of what priorities are. And one of the main ones is really that circulation and safely moving bicycles and Peds through downtown and providing that alternative experience to walking right on Main Street. So we've accomplished quite a bit to date. I'm not going to read through this, but the last few meetings, we focused really on the Ice House Alley and the Gold Pan Alley segment, concept designs. Our goal for the next steps are to present those Gold Pan Alley concepts today, get any feedback from you on, on how those have headed, and then set up a site walk and concept design for the South segment, which is a really important segment from the Riverwalk Center down to Park Avenue. So this is what we heard at our last meeting about the Gold Pan segments. One was to reduce redundancy. In our previous concepts, we had shown both an Uller Plaza and a separate Schoonover Living Lab area. So part of our goal here was to combine those. That helps us with efficiency. But also for future park, it helps us balance out all the other uses that we need to support here. We maintained employee parking in the Sawmill Lot and looked at ways to still maintain quite a big reservoir of employee parking and perhaps eliminate any of the visitor parking in this zone and keep this primarily for employees. We focused a lot on the east-west connection from the garage out to Main Street and how to best make that vertically interesting, exciting, better protect pedestrians and make them feel comfortable connecting to those two resources. We've removed a Candle Lever Pathway section in anticipation of a future underpass at Watson. And if I forgot anything, I'm sorry, but those were the main things that we were looking at phasing. How do we phase this in a way that gives us the parking now? And if things change in the future, it's really easy for us to look at other alternatives. So the Gold Pan Alley, or sorry, Ice House Alley, we did not make any changes to this. But the one key thing we wanted to highlight on this slide was just the connection at Ski Hill Road. We talked quite a bit about which side the pedestrians are on and the bikes are on in terms of signage. And so we just wanted to make sure that you saw how that flow is maintained across Ski Hill Road with this concept. No changes have been made to this concept since our last meeting. We really just wanted to show that connection here as we move into the next phase. And we're going to change directions now. So now north is on the left and south is on the right. And this is that connection we were just looking at here. Everybody oriented, reoriented? Okay, so I'm going to start with our east-west connection. With the Living Lab, as you know, we had, you know, started to separate and create a pedestrian connection through the Sawmill Lot just with our concrete barriers. This concept looks at further restricting that to pedestrians, adding some additional landscaping and vertical elements to identify that as a pedestrian access even more clearly. The Sawmill Lot has expanded into where the Wellington Lot is now. So with this concept, we're showing that all of the parking within this alley segment is designated for employees. The change to all employees, we think can be beneficial in a few ways. First, if this is all employee parking in this zone, people are coming in a different time of day than the general visitor. They'll be more in tune with what's a one-way, where am I parking, where am I going? So we think that that knowledge will be helpful, and it just increases that bandwidth. The town owns all of this property, so you have quite a bit of flexibility here. But really what we heard is maintenance of that employee area. We wanted to have half of this lot available for that east-west connection to start to really designate and clearly identify this. It's almost a promenade that connects from Main to the parking structure on the west. We'd have vertical elements integrated here, wayfinding, lighting, all of those little details that would get further refined in the future. But the, the most important thing is that prominent east-west connection. Let's talk a little bit about the rec path. We're continuing to show an 18-foot shared rec path. We are showing at the north end, an underpass going under Watson. There is an RFP out for this right now. I'm sure Shannon's going to get lots of responses. So the underpass, with that, we removed the connection that was on the east side of the river, if you recall, and how it is now. There's a path on the east and a path on the west. With the underpass, we would like to recommend that the path on the east is removed. That pedestrians crossing at grade are crossing at the extra-wide crosswalk. We developed the parking garage that's existing now. And that cyclists and likely some pedestrians as well that aren't coming from this structure will use the underpass. When you come out from the underpass, the bridge is maintained in its current alignment in this part of the Blue River. We have a slight river realignment on the south end proposed. And as you saw at the last site walk, the professional building and the slopes up adjacent to that are, are very steep and eroding. And so a slight river realignment in the south area then would allow us to do some better slope stabilization and protection up against a professional building and still, you know, maintain the 18-foot rec path and all the parking that we want. So we can really achieve a lot of our goals on the south end by doing that. You can see that the Uller Plaza area is relocated to the Schoonover Living Lab. This is shown right now as more of a temporary event space. So this could be developed into a more fully functioning park at a later phase. But at the beginning, when we're testing it out and seeing how it works, we can do a temporary event space, and that can have asphalt paving, or it could become, you know, a more decorative paving like we have up at the Breck Create Campus where the parking lot is paved as an example. Nope, I think I got it all there. No? Okay. So this is the phase one proposal here. Okay. So this is a phase two proposal. So the key differentiators with this, I would point out, let's start at the, the south end on this one. We still have the river realignment, but at Uller Park and the Schoonover Plaza, this has been combined into one park space. Now it's called Uller Park. We could change the name. We have a space for the plaza. We have ample space for bicycles, restrooms, dining areas, areas just to sit and be able to look over the river from this location. But mainly a respite along, along the alleyway and river corridor to, to give people another place to, to gather and to get what they need in terms of services. At the other end, at the north end, we have an additional river realignment. As you recall from previous conversations, the segment of the river is the straightest and most channelized. In our previous discussions with right water engineering, when we looked at this segment, adding additional river realignment would be very beneficial for the speed of the water flowing down this channel, as well as to create better habitat and overall protect from future erosion. So we're showing that river realignment as a potential that does result in a reduction of parking spaces. But we did want to show you that before and after. And, you know, how you're balancing in the future on, you know, being able to make those decisions. Along Main Street, one of the things that we're showing based on council conversation at the past couple of meetings is a possible future redevelopment site on Main Street. This would, you know, allow for the town to generate funding or develop themselves. But just showing that if, if a future council wanted to do something like this, this would be an opportunity. One of the things that infilling development on that site could also do from that pedestrian scale perspective is provide a little bit better, high-quality environment for that pedestrian moving back and forth. I'm sure you have experience just as yourself, walking through places when you're walking through buildings in a well-designed area versus a parking lot on one side and buildings on the other. While you can do quite a bit with vertical elements like celluses and landscaping, having that active people building zone is helpful. The east-to-west connection is maintained in this concept as well. Not a lot of change on that. And we did also, I forgot to touch on this, include a river overlook location on the pedestrian side of that rec path closer to the river. It's a little bit harder in this segment of the river to actually get down and touch the river. But providing some picnic area along the river is what we really wanted to be able to have in this segment. So that's our phase two. So now we're ready for discussion and comment. Again, we are hoping to have a site walk in the next week or so to look at the south segment and get your input on a site walk. And then lastly, you know, what are the, the feedback and input we want to continue to move forward on for the Gold Pan Alley concepts? And also any questions on the master plan, especially for those who haven't looked at it in a while and anything you want to touch on. We're here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Elena. All right. Questions on what's been presented?
Should have asked more specific questions.
We should have paused for questions. That was a lot. It's so good.
Talked really bad.
Comments or just questions?
Yeah, sure. Comments.
I love where we're headed. We've come a long, long way. It's, it's great. Still, I'm still not sure that the underpass on Watson is gonna be a priority for funding in my mind. You know, I think we're gonna have to really prioritize funding as we phase this. And I'd rather improve signage, improve the crosswalk, do the best we can on a surface connection there and really wait till we redo our transit center, really redo that whole area before we make any kind of sizable investment like an underpass. I, yeah, I mean, I love the phasing. I mean, the Uller Park, I, you know, being able to have a temporary, you know, multi-use space, you know, that, that is parking and event space first and kind of see how it works before we make it permanent. It's, it's great. I really want to, and I don't know kind of what this means, but I'll throw it to you, Elena, because you probably do. The, the, the more we work on this area, the more I really want to see us try to improve the occupancy of the parking structure. So the more visible or the better that connection is, and it really almost both ways, you know, because summertime and winter, if people are really engaging with this, even if they're not parked in the parking structure, they, they may notice and go, you know, next time I'm going to park there. But, you know, because I, I really think we as a town, multiple departments of town, need to really embrace a, a, a goal to improve that, that occupancy. We've just invested way too much money. Plus, it's in a great spot. We just, we need to get people using it. Because it's so walkable to Main and particularly after we do this. So, so really consider anything that we can do to, to enhance that, that corridor.
I was noticing the last couple of weeks is just the stark difference between winter and summer and the visibility of the structure with along Main Street. You can, you know, not even really see through the corridor at all due to the evergreen trees and things that are along the Wellington Lot. And so I think that opening up of that could be really helpful.
And signage as well.
And removal of other parking that maybe is better served for something else.
This was my comments for now on, at least the Gold Pan Alley.
So Dick, do you still the way they got rid of the well, I guess the crossings in the same place, but the way they just consolidated the rec path to one rec path, just.
Yeah, I think it's probably our best solution.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty tough to to try to manage to them.
I agree with that.
I mean, whereas it's not perfect, those those shared rec paths are tough. But I also think we're in, you know, we're in the downtown corridor. It's like the bikes shouldn't be screaming on full throttle electric, you know?
Yeah, so it's just the underpass that's not a priority, but that alignment is.
No, I'm fine with the alignment. It's just that underpass, because that's a big chunk of money.
All right, Todd?
I had two questions. You'd mentioned an RFP and sorry, I missed it. What was that?
Sure, we're out for RFP on the underpass design. We had a grant for $675,000 matching, so we will start design on structures. So we are a solid five years out minimum, probably on even considering construction. And the way we're shaping it is we'd be really well situated for grant funding on these structures.
Cool. No, that's super helpful. And then which way did you envision the one-way alley going?
One-way alley goes the other way.
Same way as it goes now northbound.
Okay, got it.
Be good.
Arrows would be good. We'll make sure that those are added.
I heard that arrows.
Wasn't sure if that changed.
We're just doing that.
Thank you.
Steve, any comments?
My comments are shaped a lot by spending the last month coming downtown on my bike and just looking at what was going on in the evenings. And the Watson Avenue intersection is a huge mess. And I agree with Dick. I think we can do some of these other things while we figure out how to do that whole intersection there correctly, because everything comes together there. They're coming from the gondola and they're coming on both of the paths into one area. The cars are coming down there. They're leaving the parking ramp. Everything is at a choke point right there. And you can just see the people looking around how to protect themselves from either bikes, if they're pedestrians or if they're on bikes, how do they get through the pedestrians and what do we do? So I think the wider rec path is gonna be a huge help in getting people there, even though they're gonna have to make a lot of decisions when they get there. I think we're wise not to decide what to do with the Schoonover Labs area yet. Let that kind of percolate around and see where that's gonna go. But Dick is absolutely right. We have to make people want to park in the parking structure as opposed to driving around, looking for parking somewhere else. And I think we have to make that connection from the parking structure to Main Street as attractive as possible.
I wonder, or go ahead, Steve, I'm sorry. I mean, I wonder if we don't want to put a sign on the thing that says parking, because we did such a good job of disguising it. I'm not sure too many people know it's parking.
We disguise it and you don't see it from Main Street. You see it from park quite easily and you can look and say, maybe I'll park there. But I think that's right. And I think focusing on how do we get the people from the parking ramp to Main Street will also get people to the parking ramp and off of Main Street. Signage. So I think the phasing looks really promising as far as something that we can do with the least amount of money for the biggest bang for the buck that we have right now. And then looking, we'll learn from that and we can look at phase two and see what's going on there. Just as you were talking about the gold pantry, but when we look at Ice House, just a little bit as a comment, right outside of, I think it's the going down into Clint's. There's a picnic table there by the river where that choke point is. And you can see the pedestrians coming up there. And I was just listening to what they're saying and and the pedestrians were all saying, let's walk by the river. They didn't want to go straight ahead and through the alleyway. They wanted to go down and walk by the river. And hopefully this will channel people more easily. And if we keep the bikes on the west side of the river up to that point, there's gonna be less congestion right that section. That was just my personal observation of what people are doing downtown. They want to be by the river.
Right, especially right now, for sure.
And they make that decision.
I think that the change to eliminate the parking flow through the alley will also help on your Clint's comment. It's a really good change to the plan.
Thank you. Good work.
Thank you, Steve.
Reka?
I do think moving the bike path, e- even without an underpass, even if we're crossing Watson there, moving the bike path over to the side it is on in this design is increases the safety by probably 150%. I mean, it's not hard to increase the safety at that intersection, but I think this is huge. The visibility on the other side is so bad and it's so wonky when you have to make that like S H move over. One comment, I was amazed on Fourth of July morning in the Gold Pan Alley. All of the pedestrians were in the painted blue strip across, like, and there's really no signage. Like, it doesn't say pedestrians. It's just painted blue. I was the only one. I stepped out to do something and I'm like, whoa, you are the only one in violation. And there was no need for me to do that. There was plenty. It wasn't crowded. I just was like, hmm, that's classic. As as I'm observing, I'm like, oh, look at everyone doing the right thing. So, um, but yeah, I like the phasing approach. I agree, trying to get people into the parking structure is important.
Great. Gary?
I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. I think it's a, it it's a great guiding document that we'll probably be using for, you know, a long time to come as there is a huge phase in approach on this. I think that the, I love how the direct pedestrian where the strip is, the direct pedestrian way is flows through Ice House into Gold Pan into Sawmill. I'd look, you know, as a little housekeeping, just like a little, a smaller crosswalk that takes you right through that that direct route, or if you want to call it like the workforce route that isn't for sightseeing, so people can get safely across there. I really enjoyed the phase two approach on the north portion of the Sawmill lot where you cut out a piece for the river health. I know that Shannon and I have talked for a couple of years about how that area is floods first. We always have a pond there in the in the spring. We just, you know, the drainage isn't isn't right. It's really hard to get right there. And so to be able to, you know, solve that problem by getting rid of it and and increasing river health, I think is a definite benefit. The placemaking with the Uller area, I think, is fantastic, as well as the river overlook that is just to the west of that. I think that we see that you may have a really nice plaza where the Uller is. The Uller Plaza is in the Schoonover Living Lab, but people want to be by the river. They don't want to be separated by the eighteen-foot path from the river. They want to be on the river. And and again, you can see it at Clint's where people go down that little stepped area to to have their burrito or whatever it is. And I think that is really important to have that river overlook there. As it is a guiding document, I have a lot of trouble with the phase two of the Wellington lot of having proposed buildings and development there. I think that the last time we spoke about this, that might have been scenario three that had things. And I think we were unanimous in that we were not for additional development. And as when this comes to fruition, I'm sure I will be long gone of council. I don't want that in there. I don't want future councils to be looking at that as a master plan and seeing, oh, they had earlier on seen that we need development here. If if a future council decides that's the priority, then so be it. I just don't want to set the stage for it. And and I I just feel like that that was a strong opinion of our council. And the last time was that that was, that was the one planned iteration that we weren't a fan of. But other than that, I think it's, it's great and it gives us this point on the horizon issued for, and I appreciate all the work.
Todd?
Yeah, amazing that we're working on this and thank you for the the hard work and love the direction it's going. You know, as I look, that east-west corridor to me is like foundational kind of on the success, hopefully of bringing folks to Main Street and then getting the parking structure used. You know, as I look to the north, I love the idea of widening the river there. I think that's really valuable. I'm okay losing a few parking spots down the road. Yeah, exactly. I think that is kind of one that comes down the road as we think about Transit Center. I think it seems like we're all in agreement there of like, let's focus on the other end. You know, do some planning down there, but not necessarily that investment right away. I like the idea of moving it from the the path from the, I guess that's the east side to the west side. I think that's great. Eighteen feet is super wide. So, yeah, that zone, that to me is an amazing look right there in that zone. I like the river realignment away from the professional building as well. One of the thoughts I had to just kind of throw out to the crew here, right, is as I look along the river and you've got the willows and like the river overlook zone to me is really cool. And I think kind of almost replicates what we've got at the Riverwalk Center, right, where you kind of get a little bit more engagement. And so I I'm curious if the council thinks that a little bit more of that could be valuable, especially down towards the east-west zone. So heading, yeah, right in there, like a little bit more overlook. And my thought here, you know, Jay tied into your comments last time about parking being so valuable. Do we look at making the Uller Park, and stick with me here, kind of in that zone by the bridge? So like a permanent Uller Park and maybe there's, you know, maybe there's some like public art is one idea. Maybe there's some things that would engage kids to kind of draw people to that zone. Like, hey, you're 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 gonna park, you get out, you get the kids kind of worn out. And maybe it's it's kind of enhances the gateway to Main Street, kind of pulls people there. So that was a thought on the Uller Park is like by the bridge. And then it doesn't take up parking, right? And then do we put a temporary melt-the-pavement Uller bonfire pad, you know, just to the east of that, right? So you you have the Uller Park with the the Uller bonfire zone just to the east. So you don't, you use that for Uller. I think the views might be a little bit better of the mountains that way, a little bit more space. And then when you're not having the bonfire, it's not taking up. So you have the Uller Park, talk about sustainability, what's important to the town, have some cool art there that draws people. So that's just a thought in that zone. And then on the Sawmill parking and Jade kind of tied back into what you were saying where a lot of the workforce uses that for skiing. I mean, I use that for skiing sometimes if I'm if I'm not another way. And I I wonder, you know, I feel like with parking for the so many years, we've, you know, we've had Breck Park. It's it's paid. Do we turn that into, you know, maybe it's ten of those, maybe it's nineteen of those spots? Do we turn that into employee pass free parking for skiing? And flip it around and like, hey, there's there's nineteen, twenty spots here. You have an employee pass, come ski, you know, and and change it in the winter, or sorry, in the summer. But in the winter, do we just, yeah, do we give up nineteen spots and make it employee skier parking and almost, I mean, do you go with like a T-bar vibe there where, you know, if if you're going to work and you're using up that free spot, now you're gonna get harassed. And that should, you should have ski boots on and those nineteen spots. So just a thought as a ski town to kind of maybe have a little give back to our employees there of like, yeah, come ski for the morning and then move your car when you go to work. So just a thought there in the Sawmill zone. Yeah, and those were, yeah, just I I think that river overlook is awesome and I I'd love to see less willows and a little bit more kind of park-type space without infringing on the parking. Those are kind of my thoughts.
Can you and Todd on the development in phase two on Main Street?
Can can I ask a question about phase two? I feel like there's kind of a lot going on in phase two that may or may not be really supported. I feel like my preference would be to not include the phase two.
At all.
Master plan. And so I'm just wondering how people, I mean, I realize this document has some great elements that, but, you know, Norris will be there to recreate the different route for the river and things like that. I just think there's a lot of elements, the Uller Park, the possible future development and things that maybe we're not focused on as much anymore. And it's easy to just say, oh, yeah, phase two, whatever. But to Jay's point, a lot of master plans are kind of relied on in the future by future councils. So I guess my preference is to not have the phase two in the master plan, but maybe I'm alone in that.
What would you say was the phase, what what encompasses the phase two piece? Just that?
The whole phase two map. Like there's that, all of that phase two.
See the tagline there.
So they re- the river realignment, the pu- the future, and then the Uller Park, all, when she scrolls, you'll see them go away.
Yeah, I'm with you now.
Spent so much less money. It's very satisfying. I just spent way less money, see?
Because I liked some of phase two and I agree with you on some of phase two, so I don't know.
There could also be, to your point, is that, you know, there could be just a an enlargement, you know, of the river realignment, you know, and say, things we discussed, you know? We discussed the river realignment. And then on the Uller Park, you don't have to show anything. You could just say that it was discussed, you know, how this, you know, we want a gathering space somewhere in this corridor that has good views, that is flexible. But that location within the corridor would be determined based on other factors in the future.
Yeah, and I agree with that, except for the language there, because we have, I mean, I guess the views are obstructed by the parking structure on the west side of the river. But I really think like we have an amazing plaza on, next to the parking garage, that is completely empty 100% of the time. So I'm really reluctant to commit any, like to any, you know, art or yes, to liven up anyplace else when we have a plaza right across the river that doesn't get any kind of.
Well, and that would tie in to get more use of the parking structure if we could, if we could bring some life to that plaza.
I feel like the phase one really describes where we are right now. And I'm just so reluctant to have a phase two that has a lot of unknowns.
Can we stroll straw poll if we want to drop phase two with the council?
I would drop phase two if we could keep, put, put that river alignment to the north in phase one. We might kind of semi-phase them for cash reasons, but call it phase one.
I would agree.
Agree with that.
At the river.
Okay.
Like the river line. Work by not doing the underpass.
I think it's a great progression and like, even if we just do phase one, that's a phenomenal improvement on the whole zone, right? I'd love to see, you know, I'd love to see that north part as like, hey, this is what's envisioned here. Like, let's make that better, right? You know, I I'm the one that brought up the idea of commercial. I believe I'm the one that brought up the idea of the commercial possibly as a a potential in that zone. And I'm not married to it, so it doesn't hurt my feelings to not have it in there going forward. It's just a concept to try and create a little bit more continuity back and forth up and down Main Street. But, you know, if we get half of this done, that's phenomenal. You know, and I wondered to your point about the plaza, you know, would public art in the existing plaza get more engagement there, right?
I think so, but I don't want to get into that conversation, because the public art conversation just has that whole master planning process along with it.
But I mean, whether it's public art or not, I think you're on to something with that existing plaza that's not utilized the way we hoped. I I think we do focus some energy on trying to get that alive.
Energy.
Because that will help our whole charge of getting more people in the parking structure. So I I would say, Elena, keep
Okay.
That, you know, see what kind of ideas you have to engage that that existing plaza by the structure. To engage that that existing plaza by the structure, existing structure.
Okay, and then I'm gonna make one last comment and then we do have to move on because we still have Breck history and a few more things, but. Um, on the um, behind the Bligh Building, there's, I don't know how much we're. I'm fine with the graphic that going into the master plan, but. I think this section with the public art and with, it seems overprogrammed to me. I think this is a super, super busy area um, with lots of walking and biking. And so I think we should really err on the side of maybe putting almost nothing on that segment. Because we really want people to just walk through and go someplace else. We don't want them. Be attracted to hanging around all that much. And I think um, it just seems overprogrammed right now. All right. Okay, well, thank you very much because, oh, do you have more?
I need to ask about sidewalks next week.
Great.
Um, it's Monday, the fifteenth, one P M. So we were thinking Monday at one and then the seventeenth is that Wednesday at nine.
What what are we doing again?
Sidewalk down south where you've been asking us to go on the master plan. So we were thinking the fifteenth, which I think is Monday at one.
Monday doesn't work for me at all.
Does the seventeenth at nine work?
I am.
I can do that.
Seventeenth, I'm wide open.
I do both.
Offer both and come to both or one or neither. Is that sound good?
Seventeenth, it'd be good to have us all in the same spot at once rather than.
This is our next week, so I will get an update from you guys.
Seventeenth at nine.
Seventeenth at nine, we'll send out an invite.
Thanks.
Marika, we can walk it whenever you're available. No worries. Thank you much.
Great job, Elena.
Thank you.
Really is amazing what you guys can do. All right, we're moving on to Breck History, the Historic Resources Master Plan. Welcome, Larissa.
Oh. Um, is it okay to share the screen or no for the?
It's okay.
Um, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time this afternoon. I'm here to talk a little bit about our Historic Resources Management Plan. Um, this is an update to the two thousand and nineteen plan that was endorsed by Town Council and the Board of County Commissioners. Um, the purpose of the plan really has not changed. Our vision is to use this plan to identify how we approach. Preservation and inter- interpretation of historical resources outside of town limits. So on open space, national forest sites, um, we realize there are hundreds and hundreds of mining era, um. Pre-mining era, post-mining era sites that are outside town limits. So um, this plan really refines those. Um, takes inventory, takes stock of what we have and then puts forth the ones that we feel we can. Go out and do some interpretation or preservation of um, at some point. So there are a few things, um, I'll let you all maybe get acquainted and and scroll through the plan that's in the packet. Um, a few things that have changed. One is that we've accomplished a few projects that we can check off. We're so proud of the Sally Barber Orban stabilization, the Jesse Mill uh, stabilization that we accomplished last summer. Very visible sites, big projects, big lift for us, not low-hanging fruit at all, but I think that's, you know, that's the trend we're on and where we want to keep going. Um, we also recognize that there are some land acquisitions that are open space. Used to be private that have historical resources, so those are um, accommodated in the plan and then the National Monument as well. We have some resources. Out our br- are to, out our back door that we want to make sure we are taking into account in the updated plan. Um, we have presented this to BOSAC, OSAC. And the Board of County Commissioners and have received, um, I think glowing support so far for this. Um, Board of County Commissioners did want to see us include some language about um, really supporting uh, the interpretation of youth history, youth traditions on open space and national forests. So. We're gonna look to include that language in the final version as well. Um, one other thing I wanted to point out is there's a pretty cool interactive map that's part of the plan. Um, where you can go and see some of these sites that we've identified for a possible future preservation treatment. And see a couple historical photographs, what it looks like today, what we're thinking about, where it's located. Um, as these are scattered all about the Upper Blue um, basin. Uh, finally, I would just say that, you know, this plan is conceptual. It does not obligate the town or the county to take all of these on. There are a lot listed. Um, but generally what the process is, is that we go back, really refine um, a project plan for the upcoming year, come back to you all. With a very specific scope of what we would like to accomplish coming up. And um, in a nutshell, that's um, the plan. I am happy to take any feedback. Or answer any questions today.
Thank you, Larissa, and amazing job on this plan. It's really, really cool. And I don't know if you did it or you had a consultant, but.
It was in-house.
Good job.
Thank you.
Very impressive. All right, any questions or comments for Larissa?
I love how you rank things and like give them, so we could, it's very clear to us what is, needs to happen and what's important. And I also love that. Appendix session, section where you're telling us like who is paying for what and how we're flipping it. Like, it's just, it's so helpful. It's so easy to just look at one site and be like, oh, we did that.
Or we're responsible.
Or, yeah. Flip side.
I was just gonna say, I think it's worth commenting that um, one, the, you know, your work has been incredible on in. Breck History kind of has this all-star team right now. Um, so as a council, I would encourage us to, you know, there's a really. Unique time to invest in Breck History here because we've got contractors and engineers and and kind of. Yeah, staff with tons of experience and a board that's supportive and and kind of visionary on getting a lot of this done. So I think we've got. It's a great time to invest in Breck History, so it encourages us to do that going forward here.
Yeah, I think, Larissa, this is a fantastic piece of work. And it's something that I think we need to put front and center for visitors to read. I mean, if you're coming to Breckenridge. You should read this because there's a lot of stuff here that gets people out and and. Encouraged to go see something that's not that far away, that they can walk to, hike to, whatever. But I think we need to promote this. It needs to be like a button somewhere that we can push to get that out to people. But I'm a hundred percent supportive and agree with everything that Todd said, that we need to be all on board with this. All in.
I agree with these guys' comments. Um, it's it's good, this is gonna be a powerful planning tool going forward as we try to prioritize. Love to do them all, right? And, you know, but I mean, it's gonna be a process of prioritization. Um, I also love bringing in the youth history as well. I think that's really important.
I I agree with everything that's been said. Uh, my only question is, where um. I I saw on some of the landmarking that there's some minimal grants available. Are there other areas that uh, we're searching for grant money to help accomplish some of these projects?
Uh, the best resource is State Historical Fund and those are lottery dollars that are dedicated to preservation. We received a sizable grant for. Um, the Riling Dredge when we did that project about six years ago. That's our best source um, when we meet their criteria, which is pretty strict as well.
Larissa, can you tell us and kind of the public here who um. Is less familiar, maybe what the next priorities for Breck History are?
I I think, you know, we'll certainly be coming back to you all, but ones that we're talking about right now are. Um, the Mini Mine, which is in French Gulch and a pretty visible site and um, one that sees a lot of traffic. So. Thinking about what are our options there. Uh, the Lorium Mine, which is one that's been discussed, um, certainly, you know, for more accessibility, but right at that trailhead. Has a cool mining but also ski history story. It was used as a backcountry ski operation by Barney Brewer for several um, decades. And um, Preston Townsite over in Goldrun. I think Goldrun has the same potential as French Gulch in terms of. Having a bit of a circuit of mining history and 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 social history too. Preston was a town site. And so it's not just the preservation piece, but that storytelling component and that this interpretation is really what supports preservation and always having that. Story to support our efforts to save a piece of history.
Yeah, good point. And Preston has the strap around it as well.
Preston has the strap, yes. Thanks to Larry. So it's being held together by a strap. So if it's one we want to go after, we need to do something more than the strap.
Well, that's great. Um, I did want to just take a second to recognize you have a few board members in the audience and. Just Peter and Jerry and I don't know who else is out there, but thank you so much for. I know that you guys are a very active board and the project teams as well, and you guys have certainly made a huge impact on the town of Breck over the last. I I don't know how many years you've been, um, Peter's been involved since the beginning of time, but. Um, but thank you guys very much for that. Um, it's very important, something that once lost, we can't get back. So. And thank you, Larissa, very much.
You, thanks for your time.
All right. Couple last things. We have the council norms.
So you have just a short memo in your packet, as you all recall, you did a little exercise at the retreat. Um, we had Rick put together and distill all of your thoughts from that session and then Helen's team made it look pretty. Um, so we're just. The pretty part. Um, but we wanted to make sure, one, that we've captured everything that you feel needs to be included for these. Council norms in these three categories. And if you're good with them and don't have any changes. Our plan is to print probably three or four of these and laminate them and then they will be on the dais when you have your meetings. Um, so we would love to hear any feedback you have or if you have any questions.
Perfect.
Rick does great work.
Yep, it's good.
All right, okay, great. Thank you. We'll get those made.
Well done.
And you had fun in there, which was important. Try to find a place to squeeze everything.
All right, the Summit Foundation Bright Futures requests. Is that also you, Shannon?
Nah, it will be me as well. Um, so a little bit ago, we received a request from the Summit Foundation asking for a ten thousand dollar donate, one-time donation to their Bright Futures Fund. So in the memo, you have a description of what that Bright Futures Fund is um, being created for and what it's planning to support. Um, they are doing a great job of getting towards their two million dollar goal. Um, but there's still a little bit more to be done. And so um, that's why they're asking the town for this. Relatively small donation, given what you all normally get for requests for donations. Um, one of the things that we're gonna try to start doing at any time that you are all asked to provide funding. Um, is to sort of take it back in-house, take a look at what we have for available cash. And then provide you with that information so that you can make an educated decision. Um, so what you'll see in the memo is uh, we normally have taken these kinds of asks out of our nicotine fund. Excuse me, so we've included a matrix in there that lets you know what our starting balance was in that fund, what we're budgeted to take in for revenue. What we expect to spend um, for our portion of programming. Um, and Part Two Funds, which is FERC Building Hope in the Care Clinic. Um, and then the appropriation that you've already done, which is the fifty thousand dollars for the food uh, FERC Food Pantry. And then you see that there's six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars left in that fund. Um, so I want to know if you have any questions and if you do not, would you like to make this donation to the Summit Foundation?
Questions? Oh, you did have one.
I did.
I think it's a good one.
I just. I appreciate that. Um, how come this wasn't done in our normal grant uh, cycle? Uh, as for in the normal grant and I guess Part Two would be, would be this setting up a dangerous precedent that organizations, nonprofits can. Kind of come in on off-cycle and uh, tug on our heartstrings and for and and create a good memo and.
Um, so I think from the, just from the Summit Foundation perspective, they don't normally apply for grant funding right there. Generally grantor and not a grantee. And so I don't think that they really thought about applying during the grant cycle. Um, and this is also part of their fortieth anniversary. Sort of big impactful community.
Initiative.
Initiative, thank you, that word. Um, and so that's for tw- year twenty twenty-four, so I just don't think it was even on their radar in twenty twenty-three. Um, and so they're just, they're trying to build up this fund in twenty twenty-four. And then as far as setting a precedent.
This would not be the one.
I, yeah, I think maybe we've already done that. Um, and I do think we try to control it. And and do steer nonprofits back to that grant process, especially when it's. Not a one-off grant and they're gonna continue to ask for for funding, but um, the Summit Foundation has. Really stressed that they're intending this to be a one-time ask of the town.
And are other municipalities contributing?
I don't know if they, I haven't asked them if they are, but I believe the Summit Foundation has asked all for a donation.
Do you know the verdict on those?
I don't.
We could ask on Thursday.
I I think that, again, um, it's not a huge ask. And it's for a good cause, but you know, money that's gonna be taken in and then provided out. Um, and the, the. The reasoning makes sense and i- is for things that I think we as a council are believing and buy in. I would love to know that at least the county's in with us on this. Um, and that it's not just, um, again, it's falling on Breck.
Yep.
I don't mind leveraging others, but this is so important. I mean, the career tech programs are just hugely important. I, there's. They've become so successful and are really making a difference in our school district and uh, any way we can support them, I'm I'm all in.
Hundred percent agree and I think I'd be happy to make up the difference for any towns that couldn't donate to make sure the Summit Foundation hits their numbers. It's super important.
I agree. I think the second part of the Bright Futures Fund, which is the creating local career paths. Is an essential element that directly benefits our town. Um, and. It's, it's just something that we really need and it provides for local families, local support, part of our mission.
Marika?
I agree with Steve.
I will still, Jay, try to find out the answers to those questions.
Yeah, we'll ask. We'll find out. We'll put some pressure on. We have Mayor's and Manager's on Thursday.
I'll check with Jeannie as well.
We'll shame it, we'll shame it.
Guilty.
Yeah, shame on.
We will. You're good at that.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to Planning Matters, Relocated Food and Beverage Pilot Program Temporary Sprung Structured Town Project Hearing. Thanks for that super long title.
We'll have a, a town project hearing tonight, but I'll be happy to take any questions ahead of the meeting.
To be clear, this is only about, this is not about the project. It's only about the hearing, like, do you know how to conduct yourselves? Thank you. No.
Good, thank you.
I think we're ready.
Hungry.
Yeah, we're ready. Thank you very much. All right.
Kelly, do you want to take ten or fifteen minutes and do your report outs and then go into the execs, exec session?
Great. Um, so we're gonna do that. We're running five minutes ahead, so we'll go ahead and do that, probably a little more than that because I don't have my. I have to have my executive session script open. That's why I have to look at Jay's. Um, so let's do the Report of Town Manager and Staff. Do you want to start with this, Shannon, or would you like me to do? Okay.
No. So first, um, I think it's possible Peyton already sent this out to you, but the August meeting for CAST is in Durango. That's uh, August twenty-second and twenty-third, so we do need to know if anyone is planning to attend, I think. attend. I think Kelly cannot. Carol is planning to. No for Todd.
That's CAST 22nd, 23rd? Can I get back to you? I know it's
Yeah, we just, Peyton has reserved some rooms, but we'd like to get it sort of finalized if we can. So if he needs, let me know. I think I've mentioned this before, and I know this is a long way out, but Mountain Towns 2030 is October 14th to the 16th. That is also attached to a CAST meeting. There's no expectation if someone wants to go for Mountain Towns for the couple of days and not stay for CAST, that's fine. But this is in Jackson, Wyoming. And so we are likely going to need to plan for travel, flying as opposed to driving. And so it would be really good for us to have an idea who is interested in attending so that we can get that, those details worked out.
And if I could just piggyback on, if you haven't been to Mountain Towns 2030 and you can make it work to go to this conference, it's, I think, extremely important to our town that we stay up to date with the information that they provide there. I think it also gave us a very good basis for, you know, sustainability discussions and some of the priorities that we have as a town council that I certainly would like to see continued moving forward. So just a little plug there for a little extra consideration. It's, it's not really just a nice to do. I'm not going to go this year because I've gone three years and it seems like it's a really good opportunity for someone else to, you know, go ahead and get exposed to all of the information that they have there. But I would really love it if one or two of us, particularly those who haven't gone three years, could make it work. So you don't have to commit right this second, but consider it.
Let me know on that. I sent you all a legislative position paper that CAST has put together and just for, for folks who are here in the audience. CAST really, and Kirsten can maybe add to anything that I forget on this, because I think we maybe talked about it just a little bit. But CAST is looking to take a more proactive approach to legislation for the next session. So, you know, CML is often looking for communities, organizations to help guide them in what they, in what they would like to see initiated for legislation as opposed to waiting for a sponsor to bring it up, like initiating it, finding someone to sponsor it. And so in, sort of in keeping with that approach, they put together a legislative position paper that includes three specific topics that they would like to really pursue in the next session. And that, I will say, most of these do not apply to us. One of, one of the three is a possibility, but they include short-term rental taxes, which we already have our fee. So I don't think there'd be much interest in us imposing an additional tax. Real estate transfer fees for communities that do not have real estate transfer tax, which we're one of six that has that. So there are a lot of communities that would really like to leverage that ability to help provide housing. And then the last one is local vacancy taxes, which might be something council would be interested at some point. But really, the point of all this and the reason why I'm suggesting that we support CAST in this is the idea of local control. So even if we don't want to do any of these things, supporting the efforts to allow municipalities who want to do it, to be able to do it. You know, I mentioned this to Jay the other day when we were talking, and he reminded me that we had a conversation, I think it was about the real estate transfer fees, and we didn't want to sort of jump on the bandwagon of that because it really didn't apply to us. And I think as this moves farther down the road, we may find ourselves in a position where we don't want to push on the governor, push on our legislators. But in this case, I think just in general support of CAST moving forward, it would be nice for us to support the organization. So happy to answer any questions you might have. And Kirsten, I don't know if you had any thoughts?
No, I can help answering questions.
Okay. Questions?
I have a comment, but no questions.
Questions first? No.
Yeah, I'm 100% supporter, Shannon. And I think we should at least passively sign up and jump on board and support. I'd also encourage, you know, I don't know what the appropriate way would be, but I'd love to see something in there about local control of land use guidelines is, you know, something to have as a position that's super important to us. But there may be a reason why they haven't done that, but at least bring it up if it hasn't been brought up.
Yeah. I think it's unanimously supported.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Oh, all right. So I'm going to put my principal hat on. Next meeting, we are starting at 1:30 and I, you know, so for whoever can make it for the start at 9:30, and that is a tour of stables.
9:30 the second time.
Hey. Going, it's possible. Sorry, 1:30. We'll do, we'll have transportation here. We are going to do a tour of stables. So a couple of the units, they're really excited to show you some of the units that are done and finished. And then maybe a quick ribbon cutting. And then we'll go to McCain where our Director of Special Projects will have flagged out the proposed free skier parking location and then through Block 11 so we can see the existing locations that hopefully will help with the conversation we're going to have later in the meeting. We are going to be super tight on time. So we need to load the transportation at 1:30.
Yeah. Do we want to start at 1? Because I hate to rush the McCain discussion because I think it's really important.
We could if you all felt like you could make it at 1. Otherwise, we were going to push some of the, like, we're going to give you to 3:15 to do the tour and then, you know, have, we have a presentation from the Open Space Sign Vendor Contractor Consultant. And then most of the rest of the discussion is housing. But if you all would like to start at 1, I'm sure Lori would be happy not to rush through stables.
Rick?
The plan is not really to have a discussion on
Right.
And then we'll have an outline for the discussion in here. Yeah. I mean, but there's a lot of acres out there. So I just don't want to rush. So we think we can go without rushing. I've just been on enough of these where, you know, I mean, it's exciting. Stables is exciting. Something we want to celebrate. So we don't want to rush you that. See, whatever the rest counts.
So how does everyone feel about a 1 o'clock start? And I know same position. Lori's very happy.
Oh, good.
She really wants you
We just want to make Lori happy. That's, that's what she wants.
The whole scope of stables, right? And all that is going on there. So if you have a little born of time at stables, that makes Lori very happy.
No.
Transportation at 1 o'clock. 1 o'clock. All right. And that is all I had. Thank you.
All right. Great. All right. We're going to move on to Report of Mayor and Council Members, and we'll just get through this. Are we still fine on time?
I think so.
Okay. We'll get through this part and then we'll go into executive session. No? We're right on time to go into executive session. What do you want to do?
We have a few minutes. I don't think that discussion is going to take
Okay. All right. Great. We'll move on to CAST and MMC, which we don't have because we didn't, we have it this week.
Right.
All right. Open space.
We did not have a meeting. We have one next Monday. As Shannon said, Mergies might be presenting to us, the company that we awarded the Trail Signage Plan on our next meeting. The Breck Open Space Advisory Committee position to Backfield Duke will be open starting the 12th, and will be open until August 2nd. On August 13th, we will be conducting those interviews. And then last thing was, Kelly and I were out on the Friends of Breck Trails event two Saturdays ago. It was fantastic. A lot of work. Our kids got a lot of work in it and, and well-attended and did, did some damage and Ellie's features ready and completed. So we had another one this Saturday. I believe it's a weed pull. They'll be meeting on the River Trail. So if you're interested, it's on the website.
Great. Thank you. Breck Tourism.
We had our annual meeting, which was well-attended and had a great presentation. Elected Matt, I think that's public now, right? Matt Bowders is going to be our chairperson with Bruce Horry as the vice going forward. And excited.
He's a busy man. All right. Breck History?
We meet tomorrow.
Okay. Breck Creative Arts?
Shannon and I attended a meeting two weeks ago. It was not an annual meeting. It was just a regular meeting. Breck Create is really kicking off this week. They had a big Fourth of July with a lot of support there. The summer art camps start this week in the campus. Those are all the artists in residence teaching with kids about art. The musical events start this week with the first two music shows that are scheduled. And the major fundraiser for Breck Create is on July 20th, Culinary and Creative Affair. And Breck Create is looking for people to attend that fundraiser. There was a really interesting discussion that will probably come back around at some point in time about the future of Breck Create and the music events, and the competition that we're facing with all the other towns and all the other music events. And if you look at the combined schedule, there's something going on everywhere during the summer all the time. They are looking at how they attract and hire talent and what the method of talent acquisition is. So I think there's a big discussion coming to Breck Create on the music side of things, but really strong going forward on the creative arts. Fair enough?
I think that's accurate. Yes.
Great. Thanks, Steve. All right. And Arts and Cultural Master Plan Steering Committee.
We're kind of status quo from the last meeting. Julie is working really hard and trying to get all the reference checks done. It was kind of tough with the holiday week, the last week where I don't think many people were working or returning calls. And so we're hoping to wrap that up shortly here and be able to select a consultant.
That'll be exciting. Okay. Terrific. I think we will go into executive session now. And just so that everybody in the public knows, we will only come back to close the meeting and then we will break for dinner and come back for the night meeting. So for all intents and purposes, this meeting's okay. I move that the town council go into executive session under CRS 2464024E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations with the Summit County School District pertaining to the development of workforce housing, developing strategies for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators concerning covenants to maintain long-term affordable units. All right. We are I got to take a vote? Okay. Sorry. Councilmember Sade is not here. Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard?
Yes.
Member Beckerman?
Yes.
Mayor ProTep Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Owens? Yes. Okay, we just had an executive session. The time is now 5:51, and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were all members of town council minus Carol Sade and including Shannon Haynes, Scott Reed, Lori Best, and the town attorney, and Rick Holman. The town council has discussed in the executive session whether to direct the manager to negotiate with the Summit County School District on contract pertaining to a workforce housing project. For sake of transparency, any final decision as to whether to enter into and execute a final agreement to develop workforce housing and covenants to maintain long-term affordability is the authority of the town manager. Done? All right. We're in open session, so we are concluding our work session for
Tuesday, July 9th.
Tuesday, July 9th, still. I'm going to call to order the town council regular meeting for July 9th, 2024. We are going to start with roll call.
Marika Page?
Here.
Dick Carlton?
Here.
Steve Gerard?
Here.
Carol Sade? Jay Beckerman?
President.
Todd Rankin?
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens?
Here. Let's start with the approval of the minutes. Town Council Minutes, June 25th, 2024. Any changes? Minutes approved? What? Did you want to say something? All right. We've approved the minutes and approval of the agenda.
No changes.
Okay. The agenda stands. Communications to council. This is an opportunity for public comment, non-agenda items only, three-minute time limit. Please come up to the if you'd like to talk. Oh, Scott, would you like to? Perfect. All right. Public comment is closed. Continued business. Second reading of council bills, series 2024, Council Bill Number 18, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Public Parks.
Good evening, Miss Mayor and members of town council. Before you, you have a second reading of a bill to amend the parks portion of the town code to add additional parks and clarify practices that are ongoing with regard to the Riverwalk Lawn. This is the second reading. There have been no changes since first reading.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions or comments for Scott? All right. Any comments from the public on Council Bill Number 18? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill Number 18, series 2024, the title of which, which was so succinctly read into the record.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Moving on to new business for first reading of council bills, series 2024, Council Bill Number 19, An Ordinance of the Town of Breckenridge Setting forth the Annual Supplemental Appropriation for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2024, and Ending December 31st, 2024.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Tracy Lambert, Senior Accountant, here for the first reading for the Supplemental 2024 Budget Appropriation. Your document lays out the required funds and the, for each fund, and the reasons stated in that document. From what was presented. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions? Appropriations? No? Would anyone from the public care to comment on the supplemental appropriations for 2024? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill Number 19, series 2024, the title of which I move that we pass Council Bill Number 19, Series 2024, the title of which was read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please Helen.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Alright, moving on to planning matters. Planning Commission decisions. Anything discussed here? No? Good. Alright, we're going to move on to our public hearing for the relocated food and beverage pilot program, temporary sprung structure. We're going to have Chris. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Gulick, Planning Manager for Druckard, filling in for Sarah Crump. So tonight we have the proposal for the relocated food and beverage distribution center, which will be, is now proposed on the postal lot to the southwest of the City Market Shopping Building. We did provide a comprehensive staff report, very similar to what the Plan Commission viewed and then supported unanimously for this application, along with a detailed point analysis showing a score of zero points for the relative policies and failing one absolute policy related to temporary structures. This is the same point analysis from the previous town project review for the Tiger Drudge Lot. Kind of to keep this more brief and seeing the amount of public in the room. We prefer this location because it does not require trucks to travel down Main Street to deliver. They can stay on Park Avenue until Front Street. We also, we also prefer it because it does not displace any employee parking. And then there's also some, I guess, less conflicts in terms of neighboring properties, most notably the Riverwalk Center and their loading dock. And then also it's further away from the historic district. So for those reasons, both of the locations were suit, were deemed suitable, kind of in the, the scope of looking at locations. But this one, we feel is, is better for the reasons just specified. I guess with that, I'll be happy to take any questions related to this proposal.
Alright, any questions regarding the new location of the sprung structure?
I'm curious if they're going to pave any part of that to make driving in and out easier or is it already kind of a hard pack, like Millings?
So there, there are a limited amount of paving and kind of a concrete pad. But for the most part, most of the sites that remain as is, which was, was modified, I believe in, in the fall of 2020 to accommodate parking during COVID. And so, you know, generally speaking, it is a suitable surface for vehicles, but closer to the, the Doczilla structure, there is, there'd be some paving and, and concrete. And then James is here also for any other, you know, more technical details with this operation.
They are going to have to do some site work and things to make it so that it works. They need to secure the structure. So that's why they need, you know, some of that concrete and, and whatnot, but it shouldn't be, it should be fairly minimal.
Cool. Thanks. Yeah, that's as technical as I need to get.
Chris, is this, is this to scale? It looks really small compared to how big the lot is.
I believe it's the scale. I might defer to James, but that was the, the site plan that was supplied and it showed the, and it shows the turning radius movements and there, there's a couple of the ones after it also show the turning. So I believe it's the scale.
And then do we, are there any, you know, fresh off, you know, our other projects that we've talked about? Are there any lighting or drainage or other parking lot code that needs to be applied to this or is because it's a temporary structure that we're exempt, or those are exempt?
Those standards are exempt, but with that said, this being managed by, you know, Public Works and the Engineering Department where they make sure that that while it's being implemented, that the grading and drainage and everything is sufficient, kind of in a, almost a site-specific kind of field fit manner. Related to lighting, there is no exterior lighting proposed at this time, but we have requested that if any lighting is desired to be placed on the, the facility in the future, that it does conform to our current lighting standards.
And thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I bet they'll have to. You know.
It'll be dark in the morning. Any other questions for Chris? Chris, when, I understand the way it's drawn here as far as the turning radius looks like they would go out to Highway 9, but park, but um, is there a chance that they would go from, like, would they come in on Main Street? Or like, so that they could only take rights? Do you know that? Are you aware?
I guess I'll defer to James. I might bring James down for some of these.
Yeah, I think that probably is a possibility that they would come through the roundabout and do, you know, make use of right-hand turns.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know that there's any real issue with that, to be honest. If, you know, turning there right off, taking a ride off of Main Street or, you know, that north section.
It almost seems better if they did.
Yeah.
It's just so busy the other direction. We know they don't come really at 6:00 AM, so.
Right. So I, you know, we haven't really discussed that in fine detail and until we get it up and going, we haven't really tried to, you know, make that circulation discussion.
Once we sort of know the circulation patterns better, do you, are we able to make suggestions to the drivers about which way we'd like them to come?
I definitely think we're going to have that opportunity to work with them. I mean, I think the, the vendors that we're working with now, I think we have that kind of type of relationship that we can certainly, certainly offer up those, you know, those efficiencies.
Great.
Yeah.
I'm glad to hear that. And then we got one of the big vendors? I can't remember what you guys.
We, we are in discussion with one of the, the big mainliners right now and as the, where we're at with that right now is we want to probably right out the gate, we want to get going with the smaller ones, but within several weeks, I think we're going to go ahead and bring in one of the bigger mainliners, but but yeah, we're optimistic that we're going to be able to meet the goals of the program, certainly.
Do you guys feel comfortable with the program and the current timeline and starting it off?
Yeah, we're, you know, we've been having weekly meetings and just progress meetings and so we are on schedule. It's just a matter of now, you know, getting the, the dock here and getting it set up and getting it going. We ultimately, we would have liked to have been a little bit earlier in the summer, certainly, but, but, you know, kind of given some of the, the challenges to this point, I think we're, we're on schedule.
Okay.
Much better site, so I think it's a good choice.
We're optimistic and, you know, working with our contractor too, they certainly understand, you know, some of the, the challenges that the other site introduced. And so I think they're open.
James, since you're up here, has there been any changes to the plan now that obviously we're out of the core of town, which is a wonderful thing for the Town of Breck and, and for the, the core not to have the semis coming in there. But now we have a longer run to the south end of Main Street. You think about the, the distance to the, the farthest establishment has to go to, probably has doubled. I imagine this might be like a Mikasa or, or so. Have we done anything to compensate for that distance, adding additional buggies, personnel, or anything to that effect?
Not at this point, Jay. We, you know, our, our continued discussions with our contractor, they haven't identified that as a, they're certainly aware of it and as soon as we've been talking, you know, began this concept of this location. They, just our discussions, they didn't, they didn't have any real concern with that extra distance. So where we're at right now, I guess the answer is, there's not a, not a concern.
Any other questions? Ask about the right term, so. No, okay. Thanks very much, James.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would anyone from the public care to comment on the relocated food and beverage pilot program, temporary sprung structure? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
Yes.
It's in the paper.
I move that we approve the relocation of the food and beverage pilot program, temporary sprung structure to the postal office lot.
Second.
Do you want me to read the rest of that? And do I need to read the PL? Or that's fine?
I don't think so.
It's fine?
Okay.
Great. Any further discussion? Roll call, please Helen.
Councilmember Beckerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Alright, thank you very much, Chris, for presenting and James for being here, answering our questions. We did the report of the town manager and staff. Other matters? Anyone have any other matters to discuss?
Should we consider an ordinance when somebody parks in an electrical vehicle spot and it's not an electric vehicle?
We should, but thank you very much for bringing that up. Alright, make sure you review the scheduled meetings. Otherwise, meeting adjourned. Thank you for bringing that up.